Acting as the Wage and Personnel Board as needed on July 25, 2022, meeting at 6:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Please ask if anybody is recording the meeting and announce that Cable is taping the meeting and they are present. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is Select Board announcements. Real estate and property tax bills have been mailed out and are due August 1, 2022. If you're interested in serving on a town board, committee, or commission, there are vacancies on the following: Cable Advisory Committee, Open Space Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Master Plan and Competition Committee, Energy Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you're interested in volunteering or any of these groups, please submit a letter of interest to Select Board Office by mail or email. Just want to note, I don't know if Ari's going to mention it in his report, but the COVID-19 cases are way up, big time up. And everybody's getting real nervous about it, and I know that he's implemented a policy with the COA Director, I don't know if you want him to go and mention that?
I'll go and mention it.
Okay, that's fine. But everybody should be very concerned because it's not a case, the ones that are being reported, it's the ones that are being tested themselves that are not reporting it. This is a major problem right now, and we have to keep this in mind. Tomorrow night at the Old Town Hall is a concert once again sponsored by the Lakeville Arts Council. And this is our own Sarah Martin, who lives in Lakeville, that is going to be performing. So it'd be nice if everybody get out and supported her. And she's very good, by the way, so everybody knows. That's all I have. Administrator's Report, second on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, the town's lease on the Fern Street Cell Tower site expired in 2017. We released an RFP earlier this year, had a pretty competitive response. The most favorable bid came from the existing operator, SBA Communications, which offered either an annual payment structure, which was total about $1.9 million over 20 years, or a lump sum payment on signing of $2,150,000. And we're working on the lease agreement, which will be provided to the Select Board for consideration in August, that's good news. The Assawamsted Elementary School project is progressing toward authorization at the Fall Town Meeting. The school district has offered ESER funding previously designated toward window replacement to advance the design and keep it on track. And the MSBE Board will vote on the project in September. The OPM and the designer are preparing a project overview presentation to the Select Board for next month, most likely the August 29 meeting. We're beginning to work on potential articles for the Fall Town Meeting, aiming for November 14. The list of potential articles that we have at this point includes clarification of the membership of the Community Preservation Committee, as you recall, there's an affordable housing slot on there that needs to be clarified out. Clarification of the budget timeline per the town bylaws to better accommodate outside factors, such as the state and school districts' timelines. Funding for a fire station and town hall design and construction of the DPW Administration Building. Funding for the Assawamsted Elementary School project, as I've just mentioned previously. Designation of the Old Town Hall as a historic site, that will make it eligible for grant funding from the MHC, Mass Historical Commission. We're looking at a number of proper problem properties items, I had mentioned this previously, that's a project we've been working on internally. You can expect in August a briefing on some potential bylaw changes and acceptance of laws and things like that. Several bylaws initiated by the Planning Board, including the Open Space Bylaw, which as you recall was deferred at the last, at the Spring Town Meeting. Alternate membership for the Planning Board. The Development Opportunities District, which will be at least a repeal and possibly a modification, or some sort of rezoning or something along those lines, we don't know exactly what yet. There also may be a need to modify the Earth Removal Bylaw to clarify the fee structure. And there will likely be at least one, possibly two, road acceptance petitions that are starting to come in now. We anticipate producing a timeline and draft article language next month, probably at the August 15 meeting. As the Chairman mentioned, it's still my thunder, the ongoing persistence of COVID cases. Lakeville Senior Center has reinstituted a mask, mandatory mask policy. They had a number of cases popping up in classes and things like that, and there was some concern about tracking down all the people who exposed it. At a point it became a matter of managing the risk. And of course, everyone's encouraged to manage their exposures and watch out for their neighbors. Your next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on August 15 at 6:00 PM in the police station. Thank you.
Okay, Ari, one of the things that you didn't mention that we should look at is the Rent Control Board, because it's really not necessary anymore.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we might want to take a look at that, you know, as well.
Yep, thank you.
I mean, the other thing too, you know, about town meeting is that, you know, I mean, you provided us a list of, back on July 6th, of, you know, all the capital projects that, you know, we're working on, some have been funded, some have not been funded. So we need to look at that and the potential grants, there's grants that we know, we got the Greens community, one coming up in September or October, somewhere in there, Nate, I believe. So there's that, and I know you're working on EV charges with the Middlewell Gas Electric.
Right, there's probably, none of those, I don't believe any of those are going to require a town meeting.
No, but I mean, it's just a capital project.
Yep.
So the other thing is that, you know, we've been talking to the Park Commission, especially Leah, you know, the last couple of years, talking about these projects that we have to work on. Leah, you know, we talked about Clear Pond, you know, completely updating Clear Pond, there's a possibility, including, you know, John Pond. We're going to tear down that building coming up, I think, what'd you say, September? Somebody said September? And then we have to decide, I mean?
November.
Oh, November, thank you. I understand why, but I'm just, okay. So there's other things that need to be done. I know Mike just told me that they're working on the Gromage Playground, they're working on the Trails, you know, as well. So if there's other things that we need to do, other funding needs that we need to do, we should, we should address those when we probably get together end of August, first part of September, so we can get some of these things moving and funded.
We're working on the old guard shack, too.
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, probably, I think I was, I thought we would talk about doing facilities, but we can talk about it now. So, you know, we have ARPA money, and it's useful, it's very useful for parks, outdoor, actually, outdoor recreation, that kind of thing. The town planner, Mr. Resnick, has started a conversation with the Parks Commission about planning out the parks and layout and things along those lines. In my thinking, that would be a good segue into determining what we want these facilities to look like and what, and what funding we can direct toward that, that we have on hand or available. We know we've got more money coming from Plymouth, we don't know exactly what it looks like yet, but, you know, certainly we'd be crazy not to apply for it.
No, and the thing, the thing I think that is important, Ari, is that, you know, months happen to go by quickly, as we know. And so I know a lot of these things have been discussed numerous times, you know, and in order to get some of this stuff moving in the right direction, the period between, would you say, October 1st and May 1st, Mike, is a good time to do these projects, okay? Because there's no activity, some activity, but limited activity in these facilities. Especially Clear Pond will close Labor Day, and we know we need a lot of work, you know, to update some of those buildings, you know, at Clear Pond, and Trail at Clear Pond, you know, too, so those things, we should discuss, discussing those as soon as possible. The other thing is that, you know, in the state budget, which was just approved by the legislature, is, in that budget, is an upgrade of $100,000 for the Assawamsted, you know, playground, now hopefully the governor's not going to veto it and is going to sign it, we're pretty sure that he's not, but that's another project, you know, that should be planned too, because I don't know if $100,000 is going to do it all.
It's not enough, it'll make a difference, they're looking at some possibilities of bridging that. If they can find a way to get the ESER money that they're using for the windows back, which is what they're hoping for, then the thought is maybe they target it towards the playground, that would give them enough to do the playground.
Well, I think that, you know, the ESER money, you know, was discussed, you know, during the budget process, you know, with them, and a lot of things, and Nate was involved in that discussion, you know, as well, that ESER money should be, in my opinion, we haven't got there yet, is to make improvements to Assawamsted, to improve the facility. I'm not necessarily saying the playground's a bad idea, but there's a lot of things, and you know, Nate identified these a long time ago, and they just haven't gotten done.
Yeah.
So I think that that would be a, I mean, disagree, agree with me, Nate?
All right.
Because, you know, there's some things in that building that need to be improved, and I'm all in favor of improving the playground, but I think our priorities ought to be to try to improve the maintenance and the condition of some of the things in the building.
It's also worth noting, Mr. Chairman, that the state budget has $50,000 for the Senior Center as well.
Right, right. And also has $250,000 for the mitigation, Leah.
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
It's in the.
Not in the budget, it's not in the Bond bill, it's actually in the budget.
It got moved to the budget.
Yeah, that's in the budget.
Yeah, so that's a good thing, so that would be another thing that we probably should have a meeting with SERPAD, because, you know, you know, as well as I do, Leah, you know, that it's kind of all over the place, and nobody has an exact direction on how and when we're going to do these things.
Well.
Most of these things are now funded, and we need to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I would have hoped that we would have been more involved, but it seems like SERPAD is going through the Long Pond Association Group, and I am not copying on any emails or anything, and I'm trying to rectify that, so I'm not sure. I mean, they have done test spots and everything else, so, you know, we're the ones that have been fighting so hard to get that money, and now all of a sudden they're bypassing us and working with the association. So, and I don't know if that's because the state has allocated the money to SERPAD or...
They have.
What the, you know, but, you know, I would prefer they keep us informed, but obviously that's not happening, so.
I'm sure that would be an easy fix, if we maybe just reach out to Mr. Walker.
I don't think it's an easy fix.
Do you think I haven't tried?
It's a political fix.
Well, maybe I'll make a phone call.
But that's only one piece of the puzzle.
Right.
You know, there's the dam, there's dam money in there, and stuff like that, and...
Right, and honestly, there was supposed to be, though, when we had our last big meeting on all this stuff, there was a completely different procedure put in place, and everything's being done a little bit out of order, so I'm not quite sure, you know, I don't really understand why all this, we knew the permits were going to get done first and everything, and then there was going to be an announcement made, so I just, you know, I've been talking to people, trying to figure out why it is this way, so.
Well, I think it might be a good idea, Leah, that we get SERPAD in here and we talk about all this stuff, because, you know, that's only a part of the piece of the puzzle, you know, because nothing is being done about the vote ramp, it's not changing, you're going to spend all this money to try to fix the problem, and you're not spending any money to prevent the problem, and it's just going to continue as being a problem, so.
Yeah, we were also supposed to be invited to Middleborough when SERPAD went to Middleborough to discuss them applying for certain permits and talking about the dam in Middleborough, and that meeting also took place without us getting an invitation, so. And I'm just trying to figure out where, you know, the information is getting dropped, so...
Well, I can honestly say, you know, that I think that SERPAD's part of the problem, because I got invited to a meeting the Tuesday before the Thursday meeting, didn't know anything about the meeting. We can't do that, I mean, just can't do that, you know? People have to be informed ahead of time that there is a meeting. I didn't know there was a meeting, you know, and so, I mean, that's not the first time it's happened, and I mean, you know that, Leah.
Right.
We got to straighten out the communications, no questions.
But it could just be the internal communications too, because, you know, we have a representative, so we need to just figure out.
I will make a phone call.
Yep.
Can you ask them to put it in writing to us, because they never do? Even though Ari's tried hard. Okay, we got, those are my announcements.
One review.
Well, I think it's important, there's a lot of things that need to be done here, I mean, there's tons of things, you know, that we're working on, so it's no small task. All right, okay. Okay, at 6:15, the warrant review for special time meeting of August 8, 2022. The town is required, they have a special time meeting, to have warrant review, to give the opportunity of anybody to discuss the warrant, and to express their concerns or ask any questions, and we have the town moderator here, Katie Goodfellow, who is in charge of the meeting, so any questions that she have. We did invite the petitioner, and I don't think the petitioner is here.
I don't know the petition.
So, you know, because we cannot, we, the board, cannot explain the petition. It's not our responsibility to do that, because it's a petition article, it is what it is, it gets put on, and if you get over 200 signatures, then it has to be called for a special time meeting, which we did, and it has to go forward the way it is. And so if anybody wants to say anything about the warrant article, they certainly can, but I'm not, I'm not going to get in trouble. Town moderator wants to say something, I guess?
Say something, that we have gotten a statement from the town council that we'd like...
Katie, want to come up here, please, I'm sorry.
Katie Goodfellow, town moderator for Ashley Place. We have gotten a statement from Greg Corbo, with, it's a letter.
We saw it, I saw it anyways.
That we would like to include in the warrant packet that we distributed in the special time meeting, so I just wanted to make that request, that it be included, and that will, I think, go a long way in explaining to people when they arrive, the situation with this particular article.
I don't see, the town council has no objection, I don't see any reason why we can't include that?
Great, great, just want to make sure I did the official chants.
I do, I do want to say, I was hoping the petitioner would be here, so we could discuss it, because I don't know what they're going to do next, it's nothing to do with you, Katie, that I would make a suggestion to them, that we don't want to have three special time meetings three months in advance. The poor town clerk has got the primary election on September 6th or 7th, thereabouts, they now have early voting, they have mail-in voting, and that takes up tremendous amount of her time, and to have three time meetings in that short period of time. What I would ask the petitioner, and I would get Ari to call the petitioner and say, you know, why don't you bring a petition forward that has 100 signatures on it, then we are required automatically to put it on the next town meeting, instead of getting the 200 signatures, which is going to force another town meeting in 45 days. So I wanted to get the, I wanted to get the opportunity to discuss it with him, but he hasn't showed, so I don't know, maybe he's away, I don't know.
We can hope.
But anyway, so that would be, so if you could call him and make that suggestion, I think that would be advantageous for everybody involved, they would get what they want, and get them on a special time meeting, at the same time it would take the pressure off the town clerk's office, because, you know, she doesn't have unlimited staff and all that stuff that's going on with that, so. Okay, can we do that? Yes, sir. Anybody else got any questions on the town meeting warrant? Nobody?
Oh, I might as well. Susan Spiel or Ten Valley Road. So just my question, so if there is a quorum and it's voted, it's pretty much dead in the water, correct, that, I mean, it couldn't be enacted upon?
You want to answer that, we actually have town council here for another reason. This is Greg Corbo, town council.
Oh, did I see the letter? Good evening, through you, Mr. Chair, my name is Greg Corbo, town council from KP Law. So, yes, the issue here is that in order for the town to enact a recall procedure, there are only two ways to do that. One is by having a charter, and the second is by having an act of the legislature. So this particular buy, or this particular proposal does not propose either of those two things, and so if town meeting were to vote to approve this bylaw, it would go to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General would very likely disapprove it, because there is no enabling legislation. So as the Chair was suggesting, there could, at some point, be, at a future town meeting, a question to adopt special legislation, but that's not in this warrant and would not properly be before town meeting at this particular meeting.
Okay, and it can't be amended, right? We've already established that.
Want to answer that question? Let me answer it.
Okay.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So while a petitioned article is subject to amendment like any other, such an amendment has to be within the scope of the article and in compliance with the town's bylaws. And in this particular instance, if there were to be an amendment to include special legislation, the town bylaw would require that the text of that special legislation be publicized at least 14 days in advance of the meeting, which wouldn't be done here, so the moderator would not be able to entertain such an amendment.
Okay, so that isn't, like, that special piece couldn't be brought to the town clerk 14 days prior?
That's right, it has to be publicized in the same way as the warrant.
Okay. I guess that's it, I mean, they, I know the petitioner did have an attorney look at it.
Oh, good.
So.
Yeah, if you're going to bring it forward, you know, we cannot advise anybody as far as a petitioner is concerned, and Greg can say the same thing if you want to hear it from Greg, that we can't do that. So if you bring something forward, it's your responsibility as a petitioner, that's it, and it can't be changed at that point, it has to be brought forward as is, and depending upon which approach you take, whether it's the 100 signatures, which we will have to put in on a town meeting, or the 200 signatures, which we'd have to call in, that's supposed to be another special in 45 days.
Okay, so basically, what do we want to tell people not to show up on August 8?
That's the time, not telling them that. No way.
I'll be there.
It's a warrant, and, you know, people have a right to come.
But I mean, it's like a, it's like a non-issue to vote on, pretty much.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay.
So if the meeting does not have a quorum, Greg, so we'll clarify it while we have you here, the town moderator here is in charge of that meeting. If the town moderator decides that there's not a quorum, and knowing the situation that we have here, then she can, what's the term?
Dissolve.
Dissolve the meeting, right? So we don't have to continue the meeting until another date, until we get another quorum.
And that is correct, if the moderator determines that there's no quorum, and it's not likely you're going to have a quorum, then she can just simply dissolve the meeting, and then the obligation to hold that meeting has been satisfied and the matter is resolved.
Okay.
And quorum's 100 still?
Yep.
Okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Greg. Okay, still waiting for Paul, I see, yeah, okay. All right, let's go down to number seven, and that's to discuss the impossible vote, the request from the town clerk to approve and sign the warrant for the 2022 state primary on September 6, 2022. I obtain a motion to approve that, that request from the town clerk to approve the warrant for the...
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant for the 2022 state primary for Tuesday, the sixth day of September 2022. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just so the board knows, we have it in here to be signed before you go, if you could, please.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, we're going to go to item number eight, is discuss a possible vote from the town clerk to designate the police chief from the authority to assign specific and sufficient number of police officers for all elections going forward. You have a letter here from town clerk, the legislature again, you know, is playing with the Voters Act of 1992, and one of the things that they changed was the authority of the town clerk to decide how many people they need, how many police officers they need at the polls. So what she's asking us to do is that the Select Board designate the police chief, the authority to assign specific and sufficient number of police officers according to scheduling and available for all elections going forward as required by Section 72 of the Votes Act of 22. Somebody want to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we designate the police chief as the authority to assign the specific and sufficient number of police officers according to scheduling and available for all elections going forward as required by Section 72 of the Votes Act of 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss and vote the request from Elliot Farm, 2002, 202 Main Street, for one-year beer license and wine license, October 8, 2022. Leah had asked us to defer this until our August meeting, and so this is the same request we received back in June, so I obtain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Elliot Farm on October 8, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's not in the folder to be signed, no trace, right?
Yes.
Is it? Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, item number 10 is discuss a possible vote to approve the addition of a rain date, September 18, 2022, the Lakeville Lions outdoor entertainment permit, and one-day beer license, and one-day beer and wine liquor license. They originally requested September 17, which has already been approved, and I'd like to just, as a backup, have the availability of September 18, if they get rained out on Saturday. I obtain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rain date request by the Lakeville Lions Club for September 18, to their September 7 outdoor entertainment permit, and one-day beer and wine special license.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, I'm a Lakeville Lion member. Okay, number 11 is discuss a possible vote to rescind the appointment of Gail Fish to the Lakeville Arts Council. So we want to make a motion to rescind her name, she was mistakenly on the list for reappointment for Lakeville Arts Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss and vote the Select Board minute meetings of June 27, 2022, and June 29, 2022. I obtain a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, we're going to go, we got just a minute here to go to the Park Commission. We have to wait till 6:30, because you guys got to call your meeting, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question, just came to my mind, on item number eight that we just voted for, the town clerk to designate the police chief, is that something that we have to do annually, or is this because it's a one-and-done?
This will be permitted now, because it says all elections.
Okay.
They changed all votes.
Yeah, they changed, you know, the state doesn't think when they change things, unless they change the Vote Act again, which is possible. Unless they change the Vote Act again, which is possible. It's painful waiting for a minute, isn't it, Scott?
Seems a day forever.
Scott?
Yes.
All set for Thursday?
Okay, great.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
So just send me the Zoom. Frank's not available, so I'll do it.
Take a couple of minutes.
I'll be.
The sign folder?
We'll call it all.
For the rest of them.
Happy new year.
I stopped and looked at it today. The problem we have is the kids push the rocks out.
Yeah, I know, it's that. And apparently, apparently wedding guests sometimes try to get down to the beach and worry about the safety, going down the stairs.
Like I said, it's been something we've talked about at different stages multiple times.
Yeah, it's a decent expense and we really felt like we should just cover it, so.
Okay, at six thirty, we're meeting with the park commission for discussion, possible vote to appoint two members to the park commission. I asked the chairman to call the park commission meeting to order, please.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting in the Lakeville Parks Commission, Monday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty P M.
Okay. As you know, Mr. Chair, we, we had two vacancies on the park commission. And we sent three letters of interest to the park commission. And I know the park commission has a recommendation. And they already voted that recommendation, from what I understand. So as you know, if we have a vacancy on a board or a committee, the boards get together and they have to vote on that together as a joint meeting. So if you wanna, you or one of your members wants to make a motion to recommend your appointing and then you can second it and then we'll all vote it.
I'll make a motion to add to our committee, Michael Cassani and Melissa Turcot.
Okay. Second half. Any, let's go ahead.
Any further discussion? I'm being heard.
Does the members of the board have any discussion?
Just that these terms would expire on April third, two thousand and twenty-three.
On the election, yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to do our own motion or?
I don't think so. I think we have a joint motion here and I think that's fine, so. I just wanna, just for the record, I assume you heard that, that Scott and Paula and Mike all voted yes. Tracy?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so you can close your meeting now.
Okay. At six thirty-one? Close the meeting in the Lakeville Parks Commission.
Probably the quickest meeting you've ever had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss the town administrator's fiscal twenty-two review and fiscal twenty-three goals. Leah has provided us copies. Oh, before you go, I'm sorry. Before you guys go, can you guys sign these things? Yep. Thank you. So Leah has provided us the goals for the past year, okay? And summary of progress and so forth and so on. And then she's provided us an update on proposed goals for fiscal twenty-three. As far as the review is concerned, she just provided us the review form that we're going to use. And that, you know, maybe you're gonna say that yourself. You can, you wanna say that, Leah, what you're gonna do?
Um, yeah, so I must have misunderstood because I wasn't prepared to talk about specific goals tonight. I was just prepared to update the board on what it was that I had selected and to let folks know why. We tried to, we tried to use the format that was used in previous years, but there was so much work involved in. We sent it by email, we scanned it, and it just, the document was just not cooperating. But that document's also very old. And this is a newer format that a lot of the municipal management groups are, you know, the style they're using now. So it does have open answer sections. So if you don't see something that's being addressed in some of the questions, then you can do open answer. But also, if there's somewhere that you want to make an open response, add an open response, I'd be happy to put that in the summary. So if I could get these back, though, by the fifth, I think that gives everyone plenty of time. But if not, I don't mind working the weekend before, the fifteenth, to get it together.
Okay. I would, I would suggest that we review the goals. In fairness to the town administrator, you know, the goals should have been completed a couple of months ago. And I don't think it's fair to him to have to wait another three weeks before the goals. Since we have the goals in front of us. So if we look at the goals that we had before, does anybody wanna discuss any of the goals and what has been accomplished or what hasn't been accomplished for the fiscal twenty-two? And the fiscal twenty-two, you know, runs from July first, two thousand and twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. So does anybody wanna discuss any of these goals that were presented to him back in two thousand and twenty-two? Because, you know, one of the things too would be, you know, about his review that we're going to be doing is that if there's things that have not been addressed, then they should be addressed in his, his review. So does anybody have any questions on any of these?
No, I'm fine with the, the status of the goals at this point.
The only thing that I would add is the town administrator can attempt to do whatever is on his to-do list. But, you know, I do know, like with the personnel systems and everything, as the Wage and Personnel Board, we need to be on board with it. So just because some of this may not be completed, it doesn't mean it's not, you know, it's not our fault, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so. And also, you know, there may be, I believe that's one of the only ones on here that stands out to me. And the classification compensation and all that kind of stuff. But it really was a very difficult year, the last few months. So I'm sure Ari isn't holding a grudge with us for not giving us, for not giving him goals sooner. I think he realizes the stress that the board was under. And I also think that he's very good at his job and he's been moving right along, whether we gave him goals or not, with the goals that he thinks his expert opinion is telling him should be done, so.
So then a question, Leah or Lorraine? Is there any of these goals that should be carried forward to fiscal twenty-three, which begins on July first?
Well, it looks like the economic development piece has already moved forward, which now that we have a full complement, I think we can move forward on that. But everything else in here, it looks like we've pretty much met it. I mean, I know I'm just trying to map this back now, but it looks like.
Well, and, and right.
Did I miss anything on this?
So like on number two, where it says town government infrastructure projects? I mean, it's not for lack of trying. It's just like the D P W building, there's just things that, you know. So I don't necessarily think that that's a negative on Ari. I think that, you know.
But those, those particular projects of long-term funding, Leah?
Yeah.
You know, the town hall study is really, had started.
Yeah, but I mean, it is underway, so, you know.
And it's about, hopefully be completed.
Right.
Something early fall. You know, the old library, you know, is, is pretty much done. The fire station has been a little challenged. The haunted house is, you know, out, got estimates. And the park commission has decided, I'm sorry, the haunted house has been demolished. The peach bond has been done. The records retention with the money that we had has been completed. The voice override conversion's been done, cybersecurity has all been done. So I guess the only one on that list that is a question mark, which is we need funding to do the D P W administrative building.
Right.
And that, everything else is pretty much.
Yeah, I guess that's my point. My point isn't for, you know, his lack of trying. It's we don't have the funding for it, so.
Yeah, there's a few little curves on that one.
Right.
Any else?
I would, I would suggest we have a conversation on the reform personnel systems. I do know that like item C has been completed and completed very well, actually. I was really happy with, you know, and I think all three unions were very happy with the changes to the health insurance.
That was big.
Yeah, that was huge.
Yeah.
So that has definitely been completed. But I think the, you know, the Wage and Personnel Board stuff and everything, I think that has a lot to do with us as the select board to make some decisions, so.
I don't think the H I. director started until December, right?
Right.
I'd say it's something that we really probably.
So because we had a change there.
Yeah.
So and of course, we're gonna do quote-unquote whatever this thing is that we approved at town meeting in May.
Yeah, we have.
So that's still up in the air.
There's some draft concepts. We, and honestly, Mr. Chairman, you know, given everything that's been going on, we really hadn't felt appropriate to bring it forward during that period. But now, now it's probably okay.
So number four, we finally got a town planner in place by the end of last year, which is a good thing. We've been trying to do that for a while. Reduced legal expenses, believe it or not, we did reduce legal expenses from the prior years. So that's good. Even some of the lawsuits that we have has been really good.
Yeah, but I mean, even that one, it's like you only have so much control over it when you have a massive.
But, you know, there was.
You know, chapter land issue, so.
All right, is there anything else on there? Anybody wants to move forward? I mean, we're gonna be moving forward the, these other, these other projects, you know, these, these projects are long-term projects, so.
I mean, I know, I know here we have under potential projects we refer to in the two thousand and twenty-three. We have A D A grant and we have parks grants. And for this, for the last year, we had just improved grant acquisition, so.
Which we did.
Which we did.
Significantly improved that.
Which we did. So I would just like to say I, you know, continued development, grant development, I don't know.
I agree.
Which will, you know, include a lot of these specific grants things. I, I think the town administrator, if this is our feeling, needs to know that we are really looking to, you know, and I know Christine has done a lot of work on grants and that's great, but I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so nothing else on two thousand and twenty-two, fiscal two thousand and twenty-two? Anybody else say?
No, I just, I mean, just in comparison with what's listed here for two thousand and twenty-three, I think that, you know, Ari's done a good job making sure that, you know, what he feels, you know, still needs to, you know, be completed or is ongoing was included here. And I think that the, you know, the grants are listed out, you know, for target. And of course, there'll be, you know, others that may pop up too. But I think that the flow from, you know, where we've been at two thousand and twenty-two to what you're presenting here as your potential goals for two thousand and twenty-three is pretty inclusive.
Okay.
Do we, are we gonna vote on these goals? I mean, I have, I have one.
We wanna talk about it first.
Yeah.
And then we'll vote and decide what we wanna do. So if we look at the, the fiscal twenty-three, which begins on July one through June thirtieth of next year, number one, there's a lot of stuff here. I mean, you know, there's other stuff that isn't even included on here that, you know, parks and so forth and so on. But these are the main projects that we're, we're working on or that he's working on. And, you know, it's quite a few. I mean, the fire station, the D P W, the town hall, fire station project, the old town hall roof, extension of water services and the parks and facilities that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. The senior center addition to do the study that would be presented to next year's annual town meeting. The outdoor stage cover, which we're trying to finalize that. You know, I know that Nate's got the quotes and everything and we're trying to get those contracts, you know, resolved. The S and M sit window project, it's a big, big project and, you know, that. And I know that Ari's had a number of meetings on that and Nate's been involved in some of those discussions at all. But we gotta figure out, you know, who's responsible to do what here, okay? Is the school department gonna take that responsibility? Or do we have to hire a project manager and so forth? But, you know, we're talking, you know, three and a half million dollar project at least here. And the plan is, is to get that funded this fall and to get it done next summer when school is closed, okay? You only have a certain number of window here, you know, to do that. You can't put the windows in while the kids are in school. So hopefully that, that whole piece. And that, that's, that's a huge, huge project here. The cybersecurity, we made, between Bob McDally and Ari, we made significant improvements in the cybersecurity and the I T infrastructure. There's still more work to be done. So I think that's definitely a priority that we have to address. Anybody else wanna add anything else, you know, to this list?
So under number four, continue to strengthen internal operations.
Can we stay on number one first?
Oh, I thought you said anything on the list, sorry.
I said number one, excuse me.
Okay.
Anything else you wanna add to that list than number one? Okay. Number two, acquire grants and many grant funding projects, existing projects. We were able to get, you know, through Ari's help and Bob McDally, the Fireman Network, you know, extension, which has already been approved with the city of Taunton. Once again, that's a pretty good-sized project. I mean, Ari wouldn't maintain, wouldn't manage that project. It'd probably be the Taunton.
T M L P, yeah.
T M L P to do that. The disaster recovery site, this has been on our audit for a long, long time. And this is something we need to, you know, look at from the town's perspective. And I know there's work been done on that at all. Potential projects, we know, we got the Greening Communities coming up. We know we can apply for an A D A grant. There's other grants, there's Safe Streets Grants, which is gonna be coming up shortly. Community Compact Grants to continue the retention project. This is, this is very, very important because we are really hurting for storage and space. And, you know, we gotta look at alternatives here to come up with a better way. Because right now, I mean, we just can't handle the volume of files and stuff that we have. And the E V charges, I know that Ari's working on that with minimal gas and electric. There's a lot of opportunities with park grants, you know, having to do with the Opera, the Claypon. The Betty's Neck one is something that we should be focusing on. I know that we already said that the park commission is in the process of looking at their requirements. We're gonna be hopefully doing the tenants' courts, you know, this fall. But Claypon needs to be updated. There's some work that needs to be done up to Ted Williams Camp and John Pond. And this gives us the opportunity to do these things, which has been a problem for a long, long time. So it's gonna be a lot of activity in that area probably in early September. So we need to move forward with that stuff. Anybody got anything they wanna add for number two?
In general, I, I don't know, Ari, if you think it's worthwhile to try to identify a couple. a couple more people on the town staff to train or in grant writing.
Well, we actually have Mark Gresnik's very experienced grant writer.
Yeah, but I didn't.
He's gonna work on some of the, suppose the park grants will be in, probably help me on some of the ARPA stuff too.
Yeah, I mean, I know the police, they do their own and fire does their own, but I didn't know if there was, you know, and I know, again, we're not four and five people deep in every department, but, you know, if someone shows an interest, it never hurts to have, you know, maybe even in like the inspectional services, because a lot of those things have to go through Nate.
Nate's done some great work on grants over the years, yeah.
But that's the thing, it has to go through him too. So I didn't know if someone would be willing to, you know, take a look there, but that can be an aside.
Anything else on number two?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. And number three, we got two of the items that are continuing on the personnel system priorities, which is classification and compensation study. So that'll be brought back to the board probably early fall to decide which approach we want to take to that. Okay, there's multiple approaches, so that is funded to do. We just gotta figure out what we're gonna do. The oversight structure of the wage and personnel board, that whole wage and personnel plan was said at a number of times over the last couple of years. That needs to be reviewed and needs to be updated, but it wasn't a huge priority at the time, so that may be something we want to take a look at. And the last thing is we gotta negotiate three new collective bargaining agreements with the unions this year. So is there anything else on personnel systems a priority?
I'd just like to mention that, you know, I've had plenty of conversations about the select board being wage and personnel board. And I know there's pluses and minuses, but for a few reasons, I just am not inclined to make a drastic change there. I know we've talked about it, but that's how I feel.
Well, when we get there to discuss the that particular piece, then we could discuss what the options are and make a decision on that. Okay, number four is to continue.
Sorry. Also, and I, this could fall under personnel, but it could also fall under committee and board and outreach. I think we need to do some training all across the board, open meeting law, the harassment stuff, the this, we haven't had any training since the fall of 2018, I think was the last time KP Law was here.
You know, we have a couple of ideas on the on those lines that I'm gonna talk to you about.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, you know, it was really great back then. I think, Lorraine, you had actually put it all together to see the response. We had so many people attend. And with COVID in the last couple of years, we haven't even had people that have been to in-person meetings, never mind trainings. So I think that we need to really stress training, but also training for boards, so I don't know if that goes under a different category.
I'd like to put that under a different category because I don't think that comes under HR. And I was gonna talk about that same thing because I think we have a problem with some areas with certain boards and committees. But there's no reason why we can't add in personnel systems priority. I don't know, okay, just want to say broad training or just training of personnel employees or?
I just know from talking to some people that, you know, they're like, oh, oh, yeah, that's right. So, you know, and everyone's a little off their game because we're just going back in person now, but, you know, most people who do meeting postings know the rules, but other folks, if, you know, they don't necessarily know all the rules or, you know, how meetings are run because they learn as they're watching, I guess. But I don't think it would be bad to have some of those trainings for the actual staff too.
Respectfully, that probably falls under four rather than three, don't you think?
Internal operations?
Yeah.
I would think so too, just identify, you know, particular trainings because it could be really broad. But, you know, what we're looking to to accomplish should be, you know, pretty targeted. So if it's a an increase in communications, then, you know, maybe we have, you know, a training class on, you know, communicate, improve, improving communication skills, internal communication skills, identifying who your customers are. How do you, I mean, I found that to be very useful.
Going back to to number three is that I I would say we should identify training programs for the employees. What do you think? Training programs for the employees, HR training programs for the employees.
I think that's what Ari was just mentioning, that it would fall under number four for the employees to strengthen internal operations.
I'm talking about open meeting training, but.
Oh, you were putting in.
Yes, I was talking about that specifically, but if you want, or general training for employees.
I'm just saying, general training, we have training programs, because a lot of these training programs, you know, you can do a lot of these training programs online now.
I think everyone should take the assessors 101 class, but that's just me.
So identify that, is that okay? Identify training programs for the employees. There's different programs maybe required for the highway department, maybe required for the fire department, maybe required even though they do a lot of their own stuff. You know, for the police department, for the employees in the office and stuff like that. You know, cybersecurity was a big thing, okay? It's a big problem, as we know. We haven't had, we haven't gotten hit, but we is, we could get hit and we're going through that training program right now with the state. So I mean, that's just an example of something like that.
So maybe you make a, present a list of maybe five, you know, training options?
Well, varies by, I mean, I.
I I think just.
Thinking this through, it sounds like we're talking about, you just, making sure we have a focus on the part of HR to meet in, you know, our HR and with and with the departments to identify training opportunities for the staff and 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 probably configure the budget in a way that is able to fund that as well. Because that's cost to that.
Yeah, sure. I definitely think we should specify open meeting law in the age discrimination, the one that we had done in 2018, because I think.
Yeah, that's, I'm sort of differentiating between legal compliance and, you know.
Right.
Job-related training. You know, two different, so, you know.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay, just asking. Okay, number four, continue strengthen internal operations. Maintain sustainable fiscal profile. I have to say, Ari, that this past budget process was the best that I've ever seen for the town. It was on time, it was available to the public and it was very detailed, so we want to continue moving forward with that same practice. So that's fine. Continue emphasis on communication and transparency. So I don't know if this is what you're talking about, having to do with open meeting and stuff, because that's a major problem right now.
I was thinking about that specifically there. I was really thinking, we're thinking about, you know, try to post a lot more online, more information to the public, more be clear about what we're doing, but certainly open meeting, you're right, Mr. Chairman, open meeting is really a part of that.
So I don't know what it is, but I can tell you that a number of these committees are not following the policy. And this, this mean poor, the town clerk has repeatedly, you know, told the chairpersons and the people, the administrative assistants that, you know, they're not following, they're violating the open meeting law. You know, they just can't go off on a tangent and say, well, I'm gonna talk about this. It doesn't work that way, you know, and a lot of them are doing that and it's gotta stop. And that, whether that means more training or whatever, but it should start, you know, at the chairperson level. And then the administrative assistant, which we have administrative assistants for those boards, you know. And this, this is a big problem. It really is.
They don't all have administrative assistants, but yes, the ones that do certainly.
Right.
Well, but, you know, I mean, take the park commission, you know, I think the park commission has one of the best agendas of all the committees. They're gonna put on there exactly what they're gonna talk about.
Most part, yeah.
You know, but some of these other meetings, you know, some of these other boards are just saying, well, I want to talk about this. You can't do that. It's not allowed.
Well, honestly, Mr. Chairman, we have well-staffed boards that are, that, that, you know, and I don't know what staff's supposed to do at that moment, but they'll, they'll just run off into another tangent entirely.
Right.
Or deliberately bring up an agenda item that wasn't on the agenda at all.
Right.
So.
And the chairperson's gotta take responsibility on that. The chairperson says, hey, wait a minute, what are you doing? We can't talk about that, it's not on the agenda, period.
And the clerk and the town clerk just had a, you know, train, they just went to training and they came back and said, you can't just do new business, old business. They want us to, the state actually wants us to start specifying what new business and old business is. So, you know, we need to make sure that our own committee folks know that you can't just bring up a new topic under new business, especially if it's something that would make people go, what? You know? So under that, under that number four, I think during the Lakeville Country Club process, what was missing was the Middleborough Gazette. I would have given anything to have sat down and done an interview with the Middleborough Gazette and, you know, given them or you or whoever and given what we know to be as facts. Because I know after the vote, people were calling me and they were saying, you know, I didn't realize this, I didn't realize that. I don't think that social media should be the only place because, I mean, let's face it. Anytime any of us goes on social media, most of the time we have a slant with whatever we want to say. So I never realized how much we missed a newspaper until we didn't have a reporter asking someone questions or a reporter coming to the meeting doing an objective piece on, like they used to do. They used to, you know, do the interviews all the time, they used to report the news, and that was something that, you know, a lot of folks got. Our other problem is we don't have a paper like that anymore. I know there's supposed to be some new paper coming out, but again, we don't know if it's gonna be biased in one direction or the other. So I think the only thing we can do is create more of our own. And I don't know if that means we use social media more to put out. I, I, I don't know.
Well, we can't comment on it, you know, you can put out a fact.
Right.
And which we've done.
Right, and we can engage.
We can't, we can't engage, you know, in, in, in the comment and responding and stuff like that. You can just put out factual information and that's what it is, and that's what our Facebook page is about, and that's what our town website page is about.
Right, right.
So we can't be out there, we as a board can't be out there making comments because you don't like something, okay? Because you can't represent the board. You're representing yourself and you can't do that, you're not supposed to do that.
Well, it's hard to tell what you're, who you're representing when you're just speaking from your own platform.
Well, I'm just saying, you're not, you know, you're not supposed to do that. I'm not, I'm not on Facebook and I never will be on Facebook. But I do, I will say that, you know, supposedly this newspaper, quote unquote newspaper, is that has been announced yet, but is gonna be called the Damascus Weekly. They're the same company that does the Dartmouth Weekly, they do the Marion Rochester, Annapoyset Weekly, they do the Wareham Weekly, and they do a very, very good job. They only state the facts, they don't go off on the controversial items. And you submit things to be put in the newspaper and they have, they'll have a website for us. It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be for Middleborough and Lakeville, but I'm not sure. I don't know if that's been decided.
My understanding is it's Middleborough, Lakeville and Freetown.
Okay, well, they're gonna have a lot of news coverage. So, I mean, that's a plus in the right direction, and the good news is it's free. They don't charge for it. They put it in the stores and you pick it up in the stores or the town hall or whatever it happens to be, so that's a step in the right direction.
Right.
One of the things that I was looking at a website the other day and the news, we have a, a section called news. You click on news, you put in your, your email address, okay? And it comes up with 50 different things of what you want to receive, whether it's agendas or whether it's minutes or anything to do about anything, and all you have to do is check the boxes, you know, that you want. So if you wanted to select, Mr. Jenner, every time it comes out, you're gonna get that automatically. You want the planning board agenda and whatever. It's, it's pretty good and it works pretty good. And believe it or not, we have 3,200 people who have signed up for that. 3,200 people, that's a lot of people. So there is vehicles, they're out there to do it. I don't know, I'm not sure what everybody wants. I mean, you know, we certainly have Lakeham that's doing a terrific job for us. You know, everything is videotaped and is available live as we speak right now. It is available, using their, if you want to view a video, so. I think we continue to look at it, okay, as something, you know, that needs to be done. And maybe it's a situation that this newspaper, you know, becomes live here. Then we present articles and we tell them, because normally what they're doing, they're looking for things, you know, to put in their newspaper. So I'm sure the COA and I'm sure the parks and these other ones will, you know, you know, they give you a lot of information about what's going on in the COA and so forth and so on. And we can provide the same, the same type of information there, you know, to that newspaper, so.
I have some experience, Mr. Chairman, in my past lives dealing with media relations and 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 sort of maintaining that relationship with the media so that, we sort of mean, so that you can convey the information you need to convey, know that they have a place to, to, to respond to and so on, and I have some experience with that. One thing that I, that I wouldn't mention, I was just saying a little too touchy-feely is I've mentioned this to you, I believe in the prior meetings I was meant to do this. We have recorded the first of our outreach videos. I have a draft of it sitting in my inbox, it looks pretty good, probably ready to post soon. I'll share it with you all when it's ready to go. That first, that first, it's just an overview of services at town halls where you go to pay your taxes, you know, that kind of thing. And we're recording another one on the police station. I'm gonna be doing a public works one for, you know, showing how, how winter preparation and and how paving works and things like that. We're gonna be doing one for the library and eventually for the fire station and so on, and we think those will be useful. It's, I think there's, I think one thing that's happened to our society at large over the past few years has been kind of this, you know, as we've all been sitting in our homes, this kind of fevered separation between individuals in the community and and institutions in the community. And I think it's important for us to try to rebuild that.
Okay, so all right, we got the extending informational presence beyond social media through informational videos and updates, okay? Which he's already working on some of those. Do we want to add something there talking about how we're gonna address the concerns about open meeting law?
I have a note about that if you want me to.
You know, it's, it's definitely has to do with the agendas, the agendas. I mean, I look at some of these agendas and I look at the conservation commission and, you know, I'm familiar with what's going on. I can't tell what it's about. There's no very detailed, very, very little information about what they're talking about or what they're gonna discuss. So that needs to be clarified, you know, as well as knowing the agendas, how they run their meetings and minutes. Minutes of their meetings. I mean, we got some boards and committees that haven't submitted any minutes at all. You know, we got others that are very, very good. Now, we have tried to provide the resources, you know, to do those minutes. Everything is recorded, so there's no reason why somebody can't sit wherever they want and do the minutes of the meeting and so forth and so on. So, I mean, that's another problem.
We are looking for additional recording secretaries.
And this isn't necessarily your responsibility, okay? Because it really belongs in the town clerk's office, it's a responsibility, but I'd like you to see you head this thing to try to get this thing organized, to try to get everybody on the same page as far as communications is concerned, because this is a major problem.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, a meeting with town clerk and Lakeham and our own, and our own staff is kind of some ideas to enable sort of more, more, more effective and better coverage of the of the committee meetings as well as making sure that they, that we're able to take minutes when we need to and so on. We actually, you know, we've gotten a little bit dependent in this period of remote meetings on Lakeham to provide the, the record of the recording, and that's not always gonna be the case. We need to make sure that we have that coverage for that, so.
Well, every board and every committee should have a clerk, okay? They should have a clerk, okay? Somebody has to take minutes of the meeting for some particular reason, okay? But, you know, the problem, the problem here is, is that, you know, it's not only that. We gotta figure out where the meeting space is gonna be because it's all over the place right now. That has to be straightened out, okay? Because we never know where somebody's gonna be meeting, okay? We ought to designate areas and designate boards and say, selectmen meet here, the planning board meets here, the board of appeals meets here, whatever it happens to be, and schedule those days so. be, and schedule those days, so everybody knows that on the second Thursday of the month, it's a planning board meeting, and every second whatever, it's the Board of Selectmen's meeting, whatever it happens to be. Um, that needs to be worked out, and then if they go forward with this legislation that's currently pending with hybrid meetings and stuff, that'd be a disaster.
Yeah, that appears to be off for now, but yeah.
Yeah, but anyways. Okay, anybody else got anything you want to bring up under, um, strengthen internal operations? Okay. Okay, um, okay, uh, number five, economic development priorities?
Given recent events, you might want to add something about water allocations in there.
Yeah.
That, that, that's...
Well, we do have a procedure in place, but we don't seem to be previously following those.
It'll be part of the update under old business, but yeah, I don't know if you want to think about that.
Anyway, so, that's fine. Anything else on economic priorities?
I have one I'd like to see added. Um, you know, having gone through, you know, a couple of the, uh, chapter land, uh, situations, I think, and I think Leah, you might have been working on this a few years ago, I don't know how far you got along with it, but, is to develop a clear process, um, for properties coming out of chapter land.
I think, um, I think Ari, you have that, but we didn't, we never voted it.
We, we talked about it, but it never, I guess that's...
I just think it'd be very clear, you know, just, I mean, there's land that comes out of chapter land, and it may just remain as planned that it is, but there might be economic opportunity for us, you know, as a, as a town. So, if we could have, I guess, a very clear...
Hmm, yeah, that's good.
Process on that, I think would be advantageous to us all.
Yeah, I had finished it, and the most important thing, I think, feature that I put in there was literally a checklist to make sure each department is talking to the other one. Because that, that's what was missing.
That's part of it that was missing, but the other thing is, they talk about internal, um, operations, is that there's a checklist in between the boards, and I, I think actually Nate put it together, you know, for the planning board and all the other boards that say, you know, "This project is coming forward."
Yeah, the routing, the routing process.
Okay? They'd go to, they'd go to the planning board, they'd go to the treasures office, go to the building inspector, or whatever, you know, um, because I give you a perfect example just a couple of weeks ago, that the, um, the expansion of the kennel down here on Main Street, no site plan. How do you get to the Board of Appeals without a site plan? You know? Those things need to be checked off. Do they owe back taxes? Have they paid their taxes? Because if they haven't paid their taxes, we have a, they have a bylaw in place that says, "You don't pay your taxes, you don't get your permit," okay? So, that has been in existence for a long, long time, right Nate? And they haven't followed that procedure, and that needs to be looked at, too. Talk about economic development. Anything else? Anything else?
He's writing.
Anything else you want to add, now?
Um, so, just, a number six would be for me, just the boards, but I think we've addressed that, and training for the boards, the actual boards.
Yeah, you've got that.
Anybody want to add anything else?
Not at this time, but, um, so Ari, you'll, you'll update this list again and get it posted, right?
Send it tomorrow.
So, can we plan to vote on it at the next meeting?
No, I can vote on it right now. You just, what do we got to do? You just identified everything, just get it done. Why wait another three weeks? And then you're going to wait another three weeks for us to discuss it again, and then we'll wait another two weeks.
We're not going to wait another three weeks.
We are going to wait another three weeks.
I'd just like to see, I'd just like to see a final copy. I actually was not prepared to vote on goals tonight, so I, I agree with Lorraine that, you know, I'd like to see a final typed-up list, and then, and, and like I said, Ari, he's working on it even without our guidance, so.
I disagree. I'm sorry, we've had, uh, three months to do it.
Well, Mr. Chair, we were busy. We were all very busy and very stressed.
I'm sorry.
I just think it, it just, it just shows better when we actually have a final, you know, document, because there's, could be questions, Ari might have, you know, jotted something down, but might have forgotten something.
So, there's nothing else we're going to add, right?
Not that I'm aware of, I think we've covered everything, but I just, you know...
So, there's nothing else we're going to add, right now? He's just going to finalize the list that we talked about in the goals.
I have four things to add, where we came from. Um, under number four, open meeting law, training for boards and employees. Number three, identify training programs and opportunities for employees, and enhance resources to support training initiatives, initiatives. Number five, um, develop a clear process for properties being removed from chapter status. And also, under number five, clarify the internal review process for development projects.
That's it, no more goals?
That's what I have.
Um, wasn't water allocation under there?
Oh, yeah.
And economic development.
That was why we want to see a final list.
Why?
Because we just threw out something that we forgot to write down.
You, you was mentioning, I just forgot that, yeah. I'm not sure what to put down for that. Can I just be part of the development process?
Should be.
Okay. I won't, I won't forget about it.
So, no number six?
So, between now and August fifteenth, there's no more goals. All we're doing is updating these goals, and we're voting on the goals that we discussed, right? Yes, no?
Sure.
Okay, yes, no?
Uh, yep.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I don't want more time going by.
Okay.
So, just update it, and can you get that updated to us in a couple of days?
It's here in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, are we done talking about the, um, are we done talking about the evaluation?
I thought so.
Thought so.
So, we'll use that form, and then the actual evaluation will take place at the next meeting, the actual review, and I'll have everything summarized, so we'll all know how...
So, you're going to?
I was going to say, I have a question about that, and now that we have Town Council here, um, they might be able to elaborate. I believe that this all, if we all complete this, um, and I'd like to vote the evaluation, by the way, um, the tool that we're using. But if we fill it out individually, and we send it all into an individual member...
Yep.
To tally...
Does that break open meeting law?
That violates open meeting law, correct? Because I'm offering an opinion.
So, should we send it to Human Resources, then?
Yes, you should send it to, um, a non-board member, um, who can then, you know, compile the results, but then knows that list of compiled results has to be discussed at a meeting.
Yes.
Because otherwise, if he distributes that, it constitutes like a backdoor deliberation.
Yeah, right. Well, that, that was in my original suggestion, that was going to be part of my original conversation, because I did talk to John Virella, and, you know, he gave me some good ideas on how Human Resources doesn't necessarily do the review, but they sort of keep, in other communities, keep the selectmen on track for it. So, they're the professional staff that would, you know, keep in touch with the chair and say, "Hey, you need to do this, do you want me to facilitate it for you?" So, you know, that was the other thing that I wanted to discuss, but, um, I guess for now, we'll just ask John. He was very willing to help us, so I don't think this will be a problem, asking him to compile the results.
And then once the, so if John is amendable to doing this, which I don't see why he wouldn't be, but, um, then he would put the, the information together, and at that point, it does not come into our packets, correct? So, they would have to be handed out during the meeting? Okay.
The way that we proposed to doing this was, was to do, each one of us do the thing, compile the information, and then Leah was going to present the results, summary of the results.
But I do see Council's point on me having all the results.
I didn't hear what I said. I said, "We'll get somebody to compile the results," if that's John.
Yep.
Then you take the final report.
Yep, that's fine.
And you're going to, you're going to present it to the board for his review.
Yeah, originally, though, I was compiling everything, so, that's why I wanted to talk about the actual review process tonight on the agenda, but, okay. Now, I like your suggestion, Lorraine.
Yeah, so then we'll just, so, not Ari, but John, hopefully will be at the, the meeting, and he'll just hand it out at that time to all of us, so we'll be seeing it all for the first time.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted that clarification on that. Um, but I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, um, we...
Wouldn't that be different if we had a five-person board? And two people didn't make a call?
Well, so, the thing is, is that, once the person compiles all the results, if that compilation is then given to the other board members, it's as if you deliberated and came to a consensus, because you're seeing what everybody else...
Okay, all right. So, it doesn't matter? Okay, thank you.
So, what's going to happen if Lorraine puts something in the review that doesn't get into the final report, and she's mad about it?
No, the, the final report really just, um...
Should be everything.
Puts together everybody's, nothing should be left out of that final report.
No, and John felt comfortable helping us, so I, I felt, I felt really comfortable after I talked to him.
So, when I, so, one of the things I do on, on the side, is a review of budget documents for GFOA. And when you review a budget document, you prepare a tabulation, where you go through the different, uh, qual, different criteria, you check out where they qualify, as a word, do little comments, and, and they send it to GFOA. The report that GFOA sends back takes all three, there are three com, there are three comments, takes the three comments, it will show how each, every, how each of the three voted, uh, and, 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 it does anonymously, but whatever, you know, just as they voted, and then includes all the comments that, that they all made, so just, it just puts it all together.
So, why are we compiling it? Why don't we just do the three reviews individually and then discuss them?
We could do that, too.
We could do that, too.
That's not what we decided to do.
We could do that, too.
Months ago, okay? I mean, you know, that's what you wanted to do.
But we haven't decided to do anything yet.
Oh, okay, so we're going to wait till August fifteenth, though, okay?
No, I, I mean, we can all just show up on August fifteenth with our packet, and then just do the review. Plain and simple.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
I don't think that's right, but okay, if you want to, that's fine.
Well, I think...
I just have a question regarding open meeting law. I post the packet online on our website, and it's supposed to include everything that the board is seeing at their meeting. How do I, how do I get around that?
You want to do that, you want to post it?
Right, because the packet doesn't have to have everything. The minutes have to have all the documents that were discussed at the meeting, but the packet does not. You know, the packet usually puts those documents in, it's a courtesy to members of the public, but it's required to have every document that's going to be discussed by the board.
So, Mr. Chair, let's also just specify that the town administrator is the only town employee whose review is public, right? Public information. That's why we do it publicly anyways, so.
I don't know, it would be useful to you.
I think we all just come with our notes, and...
You know, we, we, I can put together or dig up a, a guidance document, or an outline of how to, how a board can conduct a review.
We have that.
That would be helpful to you.
We already have that, HR has that. It was provided before by the previous town administrator.
All right, so where are we?
I don't know, tell me where we are.
So, I, I... No, I appreciate you putting this together, Leah, I, it's just that I haven't had a lot of time to really look at the, you know, the document itself.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not, you know, specific, I mean, high-walling it, it looks like, you know, it's got all the stuff in there that we would have to review, but I'm just looking at the document itself here. Um, okay, so there's a couple of different things that we... So, we rate a certain way, and then there's numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
And then we've got the narrative, okay? And again, I looked at so many, Lorraine, and I felt like this one was, you know, a good one for us to do.
No, it seems to be pretty, I mean, just from what I saw, but I, I mean, I'd like to, um, I'd like to make a motion, um, that we adopt the, um, superintendent evaluation, uh, superintendent, I used to be a school... Um, town administration annual, uh, performance evaluation as presented, um...
It's not on the agenda to do that, so you know.
Is it something we can ratify?
It's not on the agenda to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this was an update, so I guess we'll bring it back on the fifteenth?
Yep.
And then we'll vote on it, Leah?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we're not going to do evaluation between now and August fifteenth?
No, because it's not on the agenda to vote.
Well, I, it's not my fault, it's not on the agenda.
Well, you're the chair, you put the agenda together.
No, I put the agenda together that was different than what was listed here. She modified the agenda.
I did not modify the agenda.
You did modify the agenda.
Rich, let's try not to have a contentious meeting tonight, okay?
Well, you know, this has been going on for three months, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Okay, you know, you're right, but I'm a person, too, and, you know what, maybe you didn't need time off after all your hate mail, but I certainly did, so, you want to take it back and do it yourself, be my guest. I, I mean, you know, whatever.
Let me ask, let me ask Town Council. This is what it says. Update on town administrators' fiscal twenty-two review and fiscal twenty-three goals. That's it. There's nothing about the review on the agenda.
Right, but that wasn't the agenda article that I actually submitted. I had sent you and Lorraine...
I didn't change this.
I had sent you and Lorraine an email saying exactly what I wanted to do, and that never made it onto the agenda, so what can I tell you?
I put on the agenda what I was told to put on the agenda. That was it.
So, I feel like I'm getting caught in the middle of a family fight here a little bit.
Yeah, me too.
Um, I would just like to point out that, um, I remember this very clearly, last week, um, there were three items that you wanted to have on the agenda, Leah. Um, it was, um, as I recall, it was...
Selecting a form.
It was FY, it was, it wasn't selecting a form, it was FY, it was FY twenty-one, twenty-two goal, uh, goal review, FY twenty-three goals, and discussing a process for going forward for the evaluation process.
Right.
Which was part of the John Virella conversation.
Right.
Um, you and I had a gender review that day, we weren't sure what, um, you were concerned, as I recall, about what was going to, what were the information, what was being provided at this point, and what we're going to have.
Yeah.
And he asked me to call Leah, I called Leah, and, and, um, and it got back saying, "Okay, we're going to do just a single item." And, and, um, and there was some concern about the information not having gotten to the board yet, so we felt that just do an update instead, and so that's what we did. But I, you know, there's a lot, there were a lot of texts back and forth.
So...
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, so, if, if I can understand correctly from the context here, you're, you've gotten together today to have an update on the process of reviewing the town administrator. You've discussed that, that process and where you stand, and the next point, the next step would be for board members to start filling out their forms, correct?
Right, but she says a motion that she wants to approve the form. We don't have general right to approve that form.
But I, I guess respectfully, you're not sure why you'd have to vote to approve the form.
I just...
Ask her.
The form is the form, and you're all going to fill it out, and then you'll...
I don't hear anyone opposing it, or, you know, so I, I feel like we're all in agreement on what we're going to use for a form, so...
It doesn't seem to me that it's something that requires a vote.
Talk to Lorraine, don't talk to me.
Well, through, through you, Mr. Chair, if you're...
She wants to vote on it, not me.
If your, your interest is in moving the process along.
Yes.
It is my opinion that, that a vote is not required at this time as to the specific form that is going to be used. You can each fill out the form that you've been given and then at your next meeting, you can discuss your various, you know, ratings on that form and come to a consensus as to the town administrator's review.
It's fine with me, but she was the one that wanted to vote, not me.
All right, well, I also wanted to say, from when I wanted on the agenda was that we spend some time after it's done to actually put a formal process in place using the assistance of the human resource director, but we don't have to do that. Let's just get this done.
Okay.
So we're filling out the form.
Filling out the form, bringing it back and on the 15th doing the actual review.
Okay, so when do we get the final one?
What final one?
Says draft all over it.
Uh, Tracy and I are working on it.
When?
We can remove the watermark, we'll get it seen in the morning.
We need it tomorrow.
Uh, I don't know. Tracy, are we busy?
I gotta have it tomorrow, because I'm not gonna believe we do it.
We'll get it to you first thing in the morning, it's just a word document, we just have to remove the watermark, that's all.
Yeah, is that all you want?
I mean, it's not going anywhere, yeah. It's not going anywhere but for you to look at, so, you know, we just need to remove the watermark, that's all.
And the page one.
If I have to retype it tonight, Rich, I will retype it from beginning to end.
The question, you asked us to do it and you need to do it by August 3rd, okay? That's what you asked us to do.
But you don't have to do it by August 3rd now because we're all bringing our results to the 15th, so you'll have it from now until the 15th.
Okay.
Isn't that what we said?
Fine, whatever you wanna do, just tell me what you wanna do.
I'm not compiling anything, so you just bring your own results to the meeting on the 15th.
Okay.
You will have all the updated goals and the, and the form without, without draft, as well as the goals without draft, sent to you by.
I want the update of the goals tomorrow.
Yeah, first, yeah, all first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Okay.
That was fun.
I, I think it was more difficult than it had to be, but that's fine.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go back to, uh, update on facilities, discussion item number six. Okay, we know there's a lot of things that need to be done, Nate, okay? But there's some specific things that, you know, are priorities and you know what the priorities are, okay? And I had sent an email to you, uh, on July 18th asking for specific things having to do with seven items. So number one was to schedule the installation of the additional air conditioning unit for the old library.
Yep, if I can, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start just by thanking the board for recognizing that for the past couple of years I've exceeded my capacity and that we're looking to get help on, on moving forward, some of these projects forward. With regards to number one on your list, scheduled to install the additional AC at the historic library. One air conditioning unit was installed in the border health conservation area totaling $7,700. We do have a second unit that we're repurposing, that we salvaged from the DPW building.
Right.
That has not been installed. The concern there was we wanted to make sure we had enough money for the ramp, so I bought a $169 window air conditioner, I put that in to get us through the summer.
So, if there's a money issue with anything, any of these things, would you please bring it to Ari's attention and then we'll, we'll deal with that? Okay, I didn't, it was never discussed that was a potential.
Yeah, I don't think there will be. I just prioritized what was left at the historic library to make sure that we did the bigger ticket items first.
Okay, so, um, you haven't scheduled it yet?
No.
Okay. I understand that you got the estimate from the handicap ramp at the old library and, uh, what we're gonna do, I believe, is that you're gonna provide that information to Ari and that Ari's gonna have whoever get the three different additional bids. Send it out to ask for additional bids if necessary, which would be very unusual, I would think. It's kinda unique. And then they will put together the contract and get that scheduled. So, um, you might wanna talk to the company that's gonna do it and see if you can schedule it, you know, sometime Septemberish or whatever, I don't know how long it's gonna take, you know, to them to get the, uh, to the ramp or whatever. But anyways, you might wanna do that at the same time, but Ari and Tracy will take care of whatever needs to be done to get that moving.
Yep, I have discussed these all with Tracy, it was last week and she's helping me through that process.
The cost and schedule to fix the front stairs of the old library?
Yep, so, um, the, the cost is between $5,000 and $7,000 and where there's a variation there, as I did meet the ramp company out on site, there's a bottom beam to the ramp for structural support. It looks like it's gonna hit part of that. So before repairs, we wanna make sure that we get that ramp installed so it misses it.
Okay, so you have scheduled it?
Um, we have to see what exactly, no, it's not scheduled.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'm gonna stick to number four for a minute.
Yep.
One of the things, the kitchen con on the upstairs kitchen. I mean, that's been pending out there for a long, long time.
Yep.
And it's there to be installed. Can we get that installed somehow, some way?
Yep, so that, that's kind of part of the fire station renovation. We did have a contractor scheduled for July 1st to do all of that work. Ran into a licensing issue, we have kinda had to circle back on that. We're gonna break the, put those jobs separate. So we met somebody there last week to do the, you know, start with the framing and then I'll get another contractor, perhaps Scott or somebody, the painter. It's a non-licensed, uh, project.
Because, you know, the employees, it's not just the fire, the fire department, it's the town employees wanna go into the kitchen and sit at the table and so forth and so on. They've been waiting for that for a number of months, so.
Yes, yeah, since we had that countertop since early March.
Okay, I, I think I got the update on the John Pond Building. The park department has agreed with you that we're gonna do it in November.
Yep.
So that's not a problem.
Can I add one thing to that, Mr. Chair? Is that we did conduct the asbestos survey and there is no asbestos on the building, so that's good news for the bidding side of it.
Great, okay. Update on meeting with the contractor about the DPW, I know it's been difficult, you know, the schedule, have you even do that yet?
Yep, so I, I've spoken with the contractor, got him a full set of plans, building plans and site plans.
Yeah.
I'm currently coordinating with the DPW director for all three of us to actually walk the site and answer any technical questions.
Soon, I hope.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, going back to the, the fire station renovation and I know there's been a few challenges, you know, having to do with that and maybe you can just give us an update of where we are and what we're gonna do next.
So, stock is on site for all of the framing. Flooring guys lined up, electrical contractors lined up. Like I said, we anticipated the July 1 start date. There were some licensing issues that were unforeseen with the contractor that was gonna do the work. We met a company, blue, correct me if I'm wrong, Ari, Blue Skies.
Blue Sky Restoration.
Blue Sky Restoration that is looking to go in there and do the framing so that we can get the electrical and get that, get that going. So, right now we're waiting for a price proposal from them. We, and materials are all there, so if they do it labor only, it's gonna be hopefully pretty inexpensive.
So, we don't know when?
We have, we have another, we have another potential project manager coming in on Thursday to talk about it as well, so.
Oh, there's another one?
Yeah, that's the right, yeah.
Okay. All right, um, if that doesn't pan out, is there anybody locally that we can try to, you know, just do the framing part of it to get this thing moving?
So, so the issue that we have and with the two gentlemen behind me, is procurement is my, my favorite subject. It's, the local vendors, we, Rich, you know, we've always tried to struggle to get our, our local people and resources to do this work. When they're sole proprietors, it makes it quite a bit easier. Currently, you know, I've reached out to a handful of local crews and they're just not comfortable working with, you know, municipal projects, prevailing rates, certified payroll, insurance requirements and all of these other, other things, so if we strike out with these current two people then we probably might have to, you know, reach out and either put it in combines or, or bid publicly to see if we can get somebody. I'm anticipating that the crew that we did meet last week, they have a lot of fire personnel, retired fire personnel that works with them. It seemed like they were very interested in helping us out on this.
Okay, all right, can you keep us up to date on that, please?
Yeah, if I can to, I know that it wasn't on your list, but I know you mentioned ADA Green Communities. This fall, we will be on tap to do another $200,000 grant and, you know, we look at project management and we look at projects like the window, like the ADA grant, like the Green Communities grant. I'm stretched pretty thin, so, you know, Ari and myself and Frank Moniz and John Vierella are working closely to create some possible solutions to get these projects moving. I know that it's the, the board's intent to.
All right, so at the board's direction, we started looking seriously at the facilities management function and we're working on job descriptions and proposals.
Okay, thanks Nate for the update, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's one more item on the agenda before we move to executive session. Under old business. Under old, under old business. Update on 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. If you recall, that they have requested, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, whenever.
This is a long, strange road, Mr. Chairman.
You may kidding.
So, the town received a request from 310 Kenneth Welch Drive, which is the home of Nature's Remedy, a company called Sea Trade and the future home of Northeast Alternatives.
All right.
Request for, for $32,000 gallons per day allocation from Totten. Part of that, part of that application, which was, you know, this is a big number given our total allotment of $300,000, but what was more interesting was that part of that application included installation of an eight-inch water main. It's a much larger water main than you typically expect with $32,000 gallons per day. So, had further discussions with the, with the firm to find out what exactly is going on here. And what they told us was that the, um, they anticipated that $32,000 is what they needed and based on their current usage, it probably is, they're, they're about $20,000, $7,000, although I don't know what Northeast Alternatives is going to be, but they were planning for future expansion up to 80,000 gallons per day, which I made clear would be a real concern of ours, given our allocation with, with the city of Totten.
Just so everybody knows, these are marijuana facilities.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, two of them are, yeah, the two large ones are. The, um, we received a, uh, a further clarification from their, I guess he's an engineer that works for the property manager?
Yeah.
Yeah. And laying out what he saw as a potential, as max, as maximum usage for all these facilities put together. And that's came out to about 281,000 gallons per day. That has to do with the equipment they've put in there, there's big evaporators and some other things that are, for the fertilization systems and so on. That obviously is a non-starter. So, I have emailed them back, first of all, just trying to get some clarification and trying to ask for a restful meeting. I haven't heard back yet. Told them this isn't, that we're not gonna move the proposal forward until we get some clarity on what exactly they're looking for and how mu, and, and how much is in how that would work. I've also reached out to Totten, who we're meeting with on Thursday, they're coming in to meet with us, the superintendent and his assistant, always engineer, to talk about kind of the overall aspect of this. There are some issue, large issues in regards to the inter-municipal agreement, which was last updated in 2009 and which defined the allocation limit as 300,000 gallons. Didn't differentiate between commercial or residential. Yeah, so we, you know, if, if this is the kind of development we have coming, then there probably needs to be a discussion on the, regarding the IMA and Totten is certainly willing to allocate more water if we wanted it, so.
Well, the thing, there's a couple of problems, you know. The first problem is, is that when the new IMA was signed, which was gonna allocate 300,000 new gallons, I believe, and everything else was grandfathered prior to that. Because if it was only the 300,000 for everything, then we've already exceeded that limit. It'd be impossible. Having to do with the industrial parks, having to do with the housing, you know, the 40B projects and whatever. So, that's problem number one. Number two is, uh, we can't find any documentation.
I was gonna get to that, yeah.
Okay, great.
So, we have, we have a larger issue beyond 310 Kenneth Welch in that we've been trying to, I've been trying to, Tracy and I both have been trying to, going through, just scouring our records to try to find the, the, the records of the, of the allocations. And we can't seem to find anything in the files. I spoke with Totten and Totten doesn't have it, doesn't seem to have them either. Although they're, they're gonna look back in their, I think they have older stuff with Iron Mountain or something and they have to go offsite and get it, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, we're not sure, you know, what this all means. What they have told us is that they believe we're using about 140,000 gallons of the 300,000, but that, but honestly, that's based on usage, not on allocation, so it's not a real number anyway.
Right.
And to which, to that point, one of the, one of the questions that I've gotten from them, which is a little bit off topic now, so I apologize, but one of the, one of the questions I got was regarding La Baron, where, which the town had allocated 70,000 gallons for, which they're telling us are going over their, their usage because they wanna, because they're talking about an expansion. I would argue that's not the case at all, given the number of units and the amount of gallons and the, and the volume of water that we've allocated. So, so, so if you use that kind of approach where what you're using is what is, is what your allocation is, then that's what happens, you end up with something like, like misinterpreting the La Baron situation. So, um, it's, it's, it's a big nut, we gotta figure out. So, there are two layers to it, one is 310 Kenneth Welch and then this is the larger question of the IMA and, and Totten, and where Totten is on, on everything as it stands. Nate had some very useful suggestions over the weekend regarding 310 Kenneth Welch and things to ask for, which I've gone back to them with a lot of that stuff. Take a more holistic engineering approach. It's unclear to us, well, we don't like the idea of them tapping out the watershed or anything. It's unclear to us why this is all fresh potable water coming from Totten, they're not using, they didn't have well water in the mix at all, especially with that kind of usage. Yeah, I, I, it's just, I don't, I can't really tell you exactly what they're thinking here, so.
Well, I think there's a number of factors here, okay? We have seven, I believe, or six or seven post-community agreements, right? Okay? And out of those seven, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, four of those are cultivation facilities, is that correct?
Yep, I think so, yep.
So we have that. And so, these are two facilities. One that's been in operation, I don't know, since 2018, 19, somewhere in that area. Okay, the other one hasn't started up yet, Northeast Alternatives.
Right.
Then we have Bonneville Farms.
Their consumption's far less.
Right.
So I don't think it has to do with the fertilization side, I think it has to do with their, with their HVAC system, right? That, that.
Yeah, it's cogeneration, it's, it's, it's the evaporation.
Yeah.
So, don't they understand their business?
Uh, you know, I, I, as I said, you know, I'm not certain whether this has to do with decisions made by Nature's Remedy and, and Northeast Alternatives as much as it has to do with the decisions made by the building management in terms of what they were gonna do to maintain that facility, this cogeneration system they put in.
Well, it also has to do with the previous board, with the previous board voted for those allocations. We had documentation that says they voted it.
Yeah, I, I've, I've looked through them, I, you know, when I couldn't find the records in, in the files, I looked through the minutes and unfortunately, the, the prior, the prior managers just say the allocation was approved, didn't see how much, so.
I mean, I thought that even Nature's Remedy was supposed to be, oh, we're gonna be off the electric grid and we're gonna be off the, we're gonna be totally independent, so I don't know what.
Well, and one of the things that Juicy did and, and I know, I think, I think you're the one that told me, Nate, that they have this water chiller that's been leaking, okay? And they ran a hose off a hydrant.
They're still doing that.
You know.
That's the reason, that's the reason why I need, why Totten is so anxious for us to approve an allocation.
Well, because.
Because, yeah.
They did that without our approval.
Right.
We're supposed to approve that and why Totten allowed that to happen if they did allow it to happen? Shame on them. But this, this is a major, major problem here because we cannot allocate this much water to that one facility, no way.
And Ari's 100% right, we, we had a discussion about it and it was a design professional to, to verify those numbers. We wanted to make sure we knew the efficiencies of their reverse osmosis system, so they're running all of their water through reverse osmosis, osmosis and, and all of those systems have varying degrees of efficiency. So if you're wasting five gallons for every one gallon that you're producing, it's bad, right? If you're a one-to-one ratio, you're better with reverse osmosis. The evaporative effects of their chiller system is, is also pretty intense, but we wanted to see an alternatives analysis. What does it look like if you're doing a combination of well and municipal water? What does it look like if there's a water shortage and there's a reduction? Is there a whole harmless clause that we can incorporate within this agreement? So there's a lot of different things that we're covering, because we don't wanna be in a situation where we say you can have X amount of water and all of a sudden we have to reduce that from a public safety or, uh, public health side and reduce their water and cause damages, you know? So how do we do that? Is it, you know, is it a license, is it another HCA? Some kind of an agreement that we have the ability to control better?
I agree with all what you're saying, you know, the problem is that if they were even asking for 80,000 gallons a day, we got a problem.
Right, so I made that clear.
We can't get in that kind of gallons because that's gonna hurt us elsewhere for other businesses and stuff like that unless, you know, Totten is willing to increase the IMA, I don't know. I mean, they got plenty of water, that's not the problem. I mean, I don't know how the previous board came up with 300,000 gallons, you know, a day.
So I don't know whether it's appropriate to bring this up right now or not, but my conversation with Totten today, the engineer raised the possibility, and I think I talked to us about it on Thursday, of offering to exclude commercial properties from the allocation.
That's a huge exclusion.
Oh my God, it's a huge exclusion. I, 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 we'll see if that holds up on Thursday. I, 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 we'll see if that holds up on Thursday, but that would be.
When you talk about housing, I mean, you know, small businesses and.
Honestly, that happened, that happened, we wouldn't have a problem.
Huh?
That happened, we wouldn't have a problem.
You know, those small ones are nothing, you know, could, I mean, so many gallons.
So, so I think the bottom line, Mr. Chairman, is stay tuned, you know, we're working on it and.
Which brings up the point, though, that they're meeting with the planning board to ask for a waiver for parking on Thursday.
I had a conversation with, with, um, Mr. Resnick about that today.
They probably should delay their decision because they're talking about expanding their business. We have no idea what they're expanding, and they don't have enough parking now.
Yeah, I think that's a real point. I was gonna talk to.
I would suggest that they do not approve this till we figure out this water situation because they may not be able to move forward at all.
So I spoke to Mark about that a little bit today. Um, he was, he was, obviously I had some stuff to attention, and I talked to him about somewhere tomorrow. Um, I, I think they should probably consider deferring that. But, you know, it's gonna be up to the chairman too. I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Oliveri and Mr. Knox about it as well.
Okay. Uh, this isn't gonna be resolved for a while.
No, I, yeah, I, I, uh, I'll be happy to share with you the email I sent to them if you'd like to see it. But I, I basically, I just said to them that, you know, it's impossible.
Because the other, the other marijuana business, which happens to be the company Lorraine worked for, wants to expand theirs, you know, as well.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we do that?
So currently, we have this application pending still, we haven't.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
No, it's, it's been, it's.
Are, are, are we within our power to say, no, sorry, you can't upgrade to an eight-inch?
Yeah.
I don't know why they wanna do that anyways. Eight-inch from the street?
They wanna go with an eight-inch because they want a lot more water than 30,000 gallons.
You know, they wanna prepare for much growth.
You don't do an eight-inch line if all you're doing is 30,000 gallons a day.
Right.
You just don't. It's, it's overbuilding. Um, you know, an eight-inch line is more like.
Do they have an actual?
They put a water main.
And that's why when you and I discussed it, um, it needs a design professional to verify and proof those numbers. And we also should have the availability to have those peer reviews. So whether it's one of our peer review engineers to say, these are exactly what numbers they should be, we need to do it, the cost is borne by the applicant.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I'd really like to know what their projection is of actual usage.
Well, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, no, but like, on this, you know.
I, I, I made a, um.
We were shocked when we saw that.
I, I can, I can read to you my email if you'd like to hear it, everything that we just talked about.
No, it's okay. I, I'm sure you have it all in there. I question whether they even know what they want.
It's obvious. Well, the, the other question is, shouldn't the owner, which is the marijuana companies, be asking for this water usage?
Well, that's my question too.
The facilities, whatever he's called.
I think they're tenants.
So this is the tenant asking for this, shouldn't the owner?
The owner's asking for it.
The owner of the building.
Marijuana companies are tenants.
Right.
Yeah.
So the owner of the building is asking for this, correct?
The tenants pay the water bills, not, not the, uh, not the, uh.
Um, no, as a matter of fact, Totten was, was unable to break that down for me. Only the, only the, um, the only ones who attempted to break it down were, were the, the property managers. And I'm not frankly, they were doing that very accurate, confident they were doing it very accurate, but they attempted to.
So we have no idea what the usage is?
We do for the building.
For the building, but not individually?
Not individually, correct.
I mean.
And, yeah, this is, this is different than the Bountiful Farms building, which is owned by Bountiful Farms. This building is not owned by Nature's Remedy or, or by Northeast Alternatives or by Sea Trade.
Okay. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you, Nate. Lorraine should come back in.
Okay.
New business?
Uh, there's no new business that I have.
I don't have anything.
Okay, no new business, we discussed the old business. Okay, uh, number sixteen, we're gonna go into executive session. So does somebody wanna make that motion to an executive session and we're not returning to open session? Oh, excuse me, yeah, go ahead. Yes, somebody wanna make that motion?
Well, yes, hold on. We have to name our purpose, so. I'll make a motion that we enter executive session not to, um, come back into open session for the pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to pending and potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the lit, lit, litigating position of the public body and the chairman so declares. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, two, to discuss negotiations with non-union personnel. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, seven, to comply with the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of exec, exec, executive session minutes for June 29th, 2022.